I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. May I please have a motion to certify closed session?
Madam Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board while in closed session discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. Can I have a second, please?
Second.
Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Will you call the roll, Ms. Serza, please?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Okay, now we'd like to take attendance, Ms. Serza.
Dr. Beers.
Yeah.
Ms. Cook.
Yeah.
Ms. Hummel.
Here.
Mr. Kelly.
Yeah.
Ms. Ombi.
Here.
Mrs. Taylor.
Here.
Mrs. Young.
I am here.
May I please have a motion to approve the agenda? Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda as written. Thank you. Can I have a s- oh, thank you. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Ms. Serza, will you call the roll, please?
Mrs. Taylor. Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
All right, the next portion of our board, uh, meeting is the organizational, organization of the board, so I'm gonna hand the gavel to Dr. Heron.
Could I have a motion to open the floor for nominations for Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2019?
So moved?
So moved. Be a second.
Nominations?
I would like to enthusiastically nominate Ms. Lisa Ombi to serve as Chair for the calendar year 2019.
Have a second?
We don't need a second.
Oh.
The other nominations?
I would like to nomi-
Nope, nope, nope.
I'd like to move to close, uh, nominations for the position of Chair.
I'll second that if it needs a second.
I think it's needs of, yeah.
Vote to close nominations.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
All those in favor of Lisa Ombi being Chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the 2019 calendar year to signify by saying aye.
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 All those opposed signify by saying nay. Congratulations, Ms. Ombi.
Thank you.
Claps most enthusiastically.
Okay, so now we're moving on to item four point two, which is appointment of the Vice Chair. Um, so I'd like to ask for nominations for Vice Chair of the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2019.
Madam Chair, I nominate Ms. Julie Hummel.
Um, I would like to take a vote to close nominations.
Move to close nominations.
Second.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
I would like to ask all those in favor of Ms. Hummel being the Vice Chair of the Williamsburg James City County School Board for the calendar year 2019 to signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed signify by nay. Okay. Um, item four point three, this is the appointment of the parliamentarian. Um, I would like to ask for nominations from the floor for parliamentarian for the School Board to serve for the calendar year 2019.
I would like to nominate Jim Kelly.
No additional nominations. I'd like to ask for, to close nominations.
So moved.
Second.
Um, a vote is taken.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Um, item four point four, appointment of clerk and deputy.
You just closed the nominations.
Oh, hello. Or parliamentarian?
Yeah, you have to read that.
Sorry. Um, ask for all those in favor of Mr. Jim Kelly being the parliamentarian for the Williamsburg James City County School Board for 2019 calendar year signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Signify by saying nay. Okay, now, we can move on to four point four, appointment of clerk and deputy clerk.
Um, Madam Chair, I move that the School Board appoints, uh, Ms. Serza and-
Star. Ms. Robinson.
Ms. Robinson, sorry, sorry, flipped that, to serve as clerk and deputy clerk through 2019.
Um, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Call it roll. Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item four point five, appointment of the superintendent's designee.
Madam Chair, I move appointment of the superintendent's, superintendent's doesn't need to be Dr., Mr. Scott Thorpe through 2019.
Second.
Any discussion?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay, item four point six, appointment of School Board member to serve on the 21st Century Career and Ready Advisory Committee.
I would like to nominate Sandy Young to serve as, uh, as our representative on the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee in 2019.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Item four point seven, appointment of a member to the, serve on the Special Education Advisory Committee.
Madam Chair, I move that we appoint, um, Ms. Holly, Mrs. Holly Taylor to the Ciat Committee for 2019.
Second?
Second.
Any discussion? Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Um, item four point eight, appointment of two School Board members to serve on the Student Advisory Committee.
Madam Chair, I, uh, would like to nominate Sandy Young and Holly Taylor to serve on the Advisory Committee in 2019.
Second? Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Um, item four point nine, appointment of two School Board members to serve on the Policy Committee. Um, I would like to nominate Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel to serve in that capacity. Any second?
Second.
Any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item four point one zero, appointment of two members to serve on the School Liaison Committee.
I would like to nominate Mrs. Ombi and Ms. Cook to serve on the School Liaison Committee.
Second?
Any discussion? Serza?
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Item four point one one, appointment of School Board member to serve as trustee on New Horizons Board.
I, uh, nominate Jim Kelly to serve on the Board of New Horizons.
Second?
Any discussion?
Just like to note that Mr. Kelly serves on that Board in a leadership role for which, um, I think we are all proud.
Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
And, um, item four point twelve, appointment of School Board member to serve on WHRO Board.
I would like to nominate Jim Beers to serve on that Board, and I believe Dr. Beers also has a leadership position on the Board.
Chair, I believe.
Like, what is it again? Let's ha- everyone here? Chair.
Chair.
Chair. Pretty major.
Chair. It's a chair.
Okay.
For the Southerners.
Second?
Any discussion? Serza?
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
And then item, uh, four point thirteen, approval of School Board meetings for the calendar year 2019.
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the regular School Board meeting dates for 2019. Second?
And is there any discussion?
Um, there's, just a comment that on this meeting date schedule, it, it might be nice to highlight the, which sessions are actually gonna be longer than normal due to the budget and public commentary. I don't know whether just anyone else thinks-
So just add, like, budget, like, any, add any public hearings?
Yes, maybe add public, just something that makes it, um, stand out to anyone that it's, in addition to the regular meeting, that it's also a public hearing.
Any additional discussion?
And I'd also like to just recommend the same thing for the Stryker Center because we, we have people not going to the right place for meetings, somehow letting people know that that meeting is going to be at Stryker or here. I think that needs to be highlighted also for Stryker Center, since we're not gonna be meeting at-
Council Bay.
Council Bay, sure.
So, 'cause it's listed in the table.
You know, but I still get, yes, you just-
That's not enough, okay.
A bowl. Highlight it.
Like me, they don't read.
Any additional comments? Calendar? Hearing none? Call the vote.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye.
Okay. I'll move on to announcements, um, superintendent's report, um, item four point one, I will pass it back to Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good evening. In just a few minutes, the Board will consider a resolution honoring WJCC schools' principles for the incredible work they do to support student learning. Governor Northam has declared that January twentieth to, through the twenty-sixth is Principal Appreciation Week in Virginia, but in WJCC, we are elevating the celebration to honor principals all month long. Each day, we are recognizing a principal of the day with a surprise visit to the school and special posts on the division's Facebook, Instagram, and Twitter accounts. As you know, our principals are vital to the success of our schools and the division. They spend countless hours before, during, and after school collaborating with teachers and parents to make sure every child has the resources and opportunities to be successful. I am very proud of their leadership and inspired by their passion, but most of all, I am grateful for their dedication to the young people of our community. WJC's outstanding principals are certainly worthy of our thanks and appreciation. With that in mind, I would like to invite our students and families to help celebrate their school principles by sharing a compliment or photo on social media. Please use the hashtag #ThanksWJCCPrincipals in your post. Madam Chair, that concludes my report for this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. Uh, wanted to, are there, are any additional announcements? Folks, uh, I just wanted to give a quick update regarding the Special Education Advisory Committee that met in December. Um, one of the things that they are focusing on for this, this school year is inclusion and understanding what that looks like in our school division, and, um, their hope is to be able to highlight those gems that we have, the different pockets in various buildings, and hoping to, to spread best practice and share, um, what we know is successful. And so they're currently working with, um, administration and staff to coordinate focus groups, to learn more from teachers and administrators about what that looks like. Um, and so they hope to be able to give a report to the School Board, um, either this June, or, um, this might be a multi-year, uh, project. So, wanted to update the Board, and we'll pass this on to Ms. Taylor now, who can continue to update on Special Education Advisory Committee activities. So, uh, the next item are citizens' comments. So I will turn it over to Tummel.
We have one speaker comment, uh, card, and it's Rose Roberts.
Uh, it is at this point in our meeting where citizens are invited to address the Board, those citizens who are going to speak should have submitted speaker cards to the clerk prior to the start of tonight's meeting. These speakers are asked to come to the podium when their names are called, state their names for the record, and direct their comments to the Chair of the Board. It is the, it is the Board's interest and desire that all comments are heard and respected, hence, and citizens are asked to not engage in applauding, verbal outbursts, or any other type of demonstrations during the presentations. Personnel matters are not considered in public meetings, therefore, the Board requests that all speakers refrain from making reference to specific individuals in any form or fashion. Though the Board does not respond to your comments during this meeting, your comments are being heard and appreciated. Each speaker is allocated three minutes to make their presentation, and the Board asks that you respect this time limitation. Also, please be reminded that no time may be yielded to another speaker. Your acceptance and adherence to these guidelines will be greatly appreciated. Thank you, Madam Chair. My directions are concluded, and she's already there.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly.
Am I good to go?
Yes.
Okay. Hi, um, I would like to make some comments regarding the push for equity in WJCC. Uh, I will preface this by saying that I definitely don't know all of the solutions to every problem, and I am happy to be a part of any conversations that we're having. Um, but it's striking to me that in a division where forty percent of our students are not white, and nearly as many are on free and reduced meal programs, that the public conversations about equity I've witnessed or been a part of have been continually held by middle to upper-class white people, myself included. Um, as someone who received twelve college credits from the AP classes I took in high school, I fully understand the opportunity that those classes can give students. But if we want more students succeeding in AP courses, don't they need better foundations? How are we doing that when some AP courses have four to five students in them, and other teachers have over thirty class, or thirty students per class, or new collaborators every year that are unfamiliar with the courses? We also have multiple AP classes that take place in one semester due to the demands of block scheduling, meaning students finish their material in January and have to keep it fresh until May, or students have significantly less time to prepare for the AP exam than they should in the spring. And while there are students signing up for AP exams, many students do not take the exam, uh, and that qualifies them for potential college credit. One reason that I've heard from my students is that they aren't confident they can do well in May when they're done in January, but they stay in the class for the GPA boost. WJCC also increased the amount of leveling in our math classes with the reintroduction of teaching Algebra I and Parts. There are tons of divisions across the country that get just as good, if not better, math scores on standardized tests, especially in the subgroups WJCC is concerned with, um, with about fifty to seventy-five percent of the instructional time that we use. Slower versions of our math courses tend to consist of more black and brown students than the regular versions of those same courses. San Francisco Unified School District, obviously more economically and racially diverse than WJCC, requires all students to take Algebra I as freshmen. In the first few years of implementing, implementing this, they have cut their percentage of students who need to repeat Algebra I to fewer than ten percent of their overall population. A two thousand fifteen report from the CDC states that the average start time for middle and high schools in the state of Virginia was eight oh four PM with only ten percent of divisions having an average start time before eight, eight AM. WJCC's average start time for middle schools and high schools is seven thirty-nine AM, nearly a half hour earlier than the vast majority of other divisions in the state. Uh, this group that we are in is only going to continue decreasing as large divisions such as Chesterfield and Virginia Beach are planning on starting later in upcoming school years. Is start time a measure in which we want to lead the state? There are also many reports that state mixed results regarding a block schedule, and as the state requires more outside of the traditional classroom of our students, I think the division should look into other options. Um, there's lots more that I would love to talk about, but I know that I only have three minutes. Um, so I'll end by saying I do think that the division's, uh, communication is improving. I appreciate teacher responses being solicited. I'm super excited to be building another Commonwealth Innovation Course for all of the high schools, and thank you.
Thank you. I believe that, that was our only speaker. The next, um, item on the proposed agenda is item seven point one. This is the VSBA Code of Conduct for School Board Members. I'd like to open up for discussion. This is a document that we sign annually.
There haven't been any changes, has it, since?
This is what we signed last year.
Yeah.
This will matriculate to the next agenda on the twenty-second. We will sign it and approve it. Everyone's good? Okay, uh, moving on then to the Program of Studies.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Okay.
Uh, this evening, I'm going to present the Program of Studies for two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty, uh, an academic and career planning guide for middle and high school, and Dr. Worley and Ms. Liz Parker are both here to present the program this evening. Dr. Worley's going to start the presentation. I should say before they begin that this has been an incredibly collaborative effort of many, many people involved in this process this year, and I look forward to some of the changes that are recommended.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. We are excited about the opportunity this evening to present our proposed two thousand nineteen, twenty Program of Studies. This effort was championed by our Coordinator of School Counseling, Elizabeth Parker, with the in, input of many stakeholders, to include teachers, administrators, counselors, Department of Curriculum Instruction, our Communications Department, our Division Leadership Team, and many more. We also had a, a high school innovation committee that's been working all year, led by Assistant Principal Michelle Newcomb, who took a look at the development and progress of our innovation courses, supported by our recent video grants. Many teachers and administrators from all three high schools worked together to identify next steps and courses to continue this innovative work at every high school. We are very excited about this collaborative effort, and we look forward to your input and feedback. Um, I wanted to mention that on your, um, podium, you have a copy of the presentation, as well as a, a detailed outline of, um, proposed changes. You also have a copy of the Program of Studies on Board Docs and in an email format to you. So at this time, I'm really excited to introduce Ms. Parker, who is gonna take you, um, step by step through our changes.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Tonight's proposed revisions and updates assist our Program of Studies in becoming a more user-friendly and relevant tool to aid students and families in considering which courses, programs, and options offer the best foundation for achieving their goals. As you can see here, the Program of Studies aligns with WJCC's strategic plan to elevate beyond excellence, specifically with goals one, two, and three. Before we begin again, I would like to thank the many different groups and stakeholders that met and took the time to review information and provided input over a period of many months in order to develop the Program of Studies proposed here this evening. I would also like to note that any new courses added to the Program of Studies went through an extensive new course proposal process, which also includes an interdisciplinary committee review and takes into account things like staffing and facilities, um, other courses within that context area, among other things. To begin, we made some overall changes and updates. We reformatted the overall layout and updated the design to help ease navigation and increase readability. So more specifically, we went ahead and included all programmatic information at the beginning of the Program of Studies and all course offerings and descriptions at the end. We also revised the table of contents, and this now includes section headings and subheadings of our higher traffic areas, and we reordered the content areas and course offerings and descriptions so that they mirrored the VDOE and WJCC academic and career plan. We also updated course codes to align with updated VDOE SCED crosswalks, and we updated the list of course offerings for New Horizons' Career and Technical Education Center, as well as New Horizons' Governor's School for Science and Technology per the changes reflected from New Horizons. And we will be updating the School Board Member section to reflect new appointments from this evening's meeting. We also made some revisions to general information and terminology. We updated Career and Technical Education section to include a computer informa- and information sciences strand to accurately reflect, reflect our program offerings. We revised the course selection, registration, and the drop-add definition to continue clarifying those processes for our families and students. We combined the explanation of grade point average with class rank and revised the title to reflect this combination, and we combined the explanation of grading scale with weighting and revised the title to reflect this combination as well. We also updated verified credits to reflect recent updates to standards of accreditation. And finally, we updated the work based, work-based learning methods of instruction to clearly identify the eight different types of work-based learning methods of instruction recognized in Virginia. We also have made some revisions into the Middle School Program section. We updated the program description for sixth, seventh, and eighth grade to reflect updates to required courses and elective options. Specifically, in sixth grade, we've updated the exploratory wheel to reflect that this course is now an elective option versus a required course. This increases student elective choices in sixth grade from one to two. In seventh and eighth grade, career investigation was removed as a standalone course requirement. The VDOE approved middle school career investigation curriculum will be integrated into Health and PE six, and we'll address that more later. The upper elementary and middle school math sequence graphic was moved to the section of course offerings and descriptions underneath math to increase ease of referencing the math sequences when course planning. And we revised the title, Middle School Honors English Requirements, to read honors level coursework, and then replaced the flow chart that existed there with a statement regarding the placement process. the placement process. This will provide greater flexibility and student access to honors level coursework, which, as you know, is directly tied to our strategic plan. We also removed any reference to the WJCC Athletic Handbook. This has been a document that's a standalone document for ten-plus years and is available as a separate document to our students and families. In regards to the High School Program Changes and Updates, we moved other diploma types. It is now immediately following diploma requirements to simplify navigation. We combined three tables into one in the Students Transferring into a Virginia Public School section to ease the identification of credit requirements for our transfer students. We also added a Earning College Credits in High School section to clearly identify opportunities for students to experience college-level studies while in high school. Within this section, we added an Advanced Placement Description and clearly identified credits earned. We added or included and updated a description of dual enrollment to include both in-school dual enrollment and early college program and clearly identified the credits earned. And we incorporated and updated a description of concurrent college enrollment, and again, clearly identified the credits earned. We also updated our Virtual Learning section. We added language to clarify the enrollment process and pacing requirements of WJCC's virtual learning program. We also added language to clarify tuition responsibilities for virtual Virginia courses taken in the regular school year versus taken over the summer session. And we included a reference and URL to a VDOE website to help support and assist families in locating transferable credits from Virginia's approved multi-division online providers. And finally, we introduced our Commonwealth Innovation Courses to replace WJCC High School Program Innovation, subsequent to the conclusion of the Governor's HSPI grant. So we listed related courses to communicate either the continuation or the addition of innovated courses offerings available to our high school students. And we revised special programs for clarity and consistency. We removed Project Lead the Way under Special Programs to signify that Project Lead the Way courses are open to all WJCC high school students and not limited to a special program. We updated WJCC Honors Program information to clarify the AP exam requirements. And we also included a reference to the Honors Program webpage. We added WJCC Learning Lab to accurately reflect the availability of non-traditional We also relocated and updated the Core Course Planning Guide. So we placed the suggested course sequences under those Related and Specific Content Areas in the Course Offerings and Descriptions section to really increase the ease of referencing these course selections when course planning. And we updated the suggested course sequences for English, Math, Science, and Social Studies to include related Commonwealth Innovation Courses. And finally, we removed in this area the High School Athletics and any reference again to the Athletic Handbook, because this is a standalone document. So this concludes the overall updates and revisions. We will now move on to specific updates to course offerings and descriptions at both the middle and high school level. If you are following along with the electronic copy, this begins on page 18, or with a hard copy, with Middle School Course Offerings and Descriptions. In English, on page 18, in both Honors English VII and Honors English VIII, we adjusted the prerequisite to include previous-year reading SOL tests at 450 or above to increase flexibility of student access to higher-level coursework. Math, beginning on page 19, we updated course titles to clarify course content. So what was Foundations of Algebra Part I, Part II, and Part III is now Pre-Algebra VI, Pre-Algebra VII, and Pre-Algebra VIII. And we revised the suggested Upper Elementary and Middle School Math Sequence to reflect those new course titles and align grade-level coursework with state assessment requirements per ESSA, or the Every Student Succeeds Act. On page 20, we removed the Algebra I Sequence I to reflect revised Upper Elementary and Middle School Math Sequences. On page 21, in Health and Physical Education, we expanded the Health and Physical Education Grade VI Course Description to include the VDOE Middle School Career Investigation On page 23, under Fine Arts, we updated the Course Description of General Music to reflect that this will now be delivered through the Sixth Grade Exploratory Wheel. And we updated Guitar to reflect that students may take the course in Grade VII or in Grade On page 26, in the area of Career and Technical Education, or CTE, we removed Introduction to Career Exploration from the Exploratory Wheel to reflect the VDOE Middle School Career Investigation Curriculum Integration into Health and PE VI. And we removed Career Investigation to reflect, again, that VDOE Middle School Career Investigation Curriculum Integration into Health and PE VI.
I have a question.
Sure.
I've been following along, and it looked like there was, you know, track changes. Then, when you get to page 23, and you're saying, on page 23, you're saying there were, what additions?
Do we updated the Course Description of General Music to reflect that it will be delivered through the Sixth Grade Exploratory Wheel?
Yep, that is not, it's, I can't see the new language. Can you see the new language?
No, it's not tracked, yeah.
It's not tracked, so...
Not in red.
Like, it's not in red, and from 23 on, it's not in red, so I can't...
So if something was removed, it's not going to appear in red, but it is going to appear in the outline that was provided. We did a lot of movement and changes, and it was getting a little confusing still.
So there's nothing, so if something's been taken away, we don't see that.
Nope, but it's in the detailed outline.
Okay, so back to 23, just so I, it's just, the description has...
Yep, so it's really just a one line that says this course is delivered through the Sixth Grade Exploratory Wheel.
That's an addition. That this class is delivered through the Exploratory Wheel?
Correct.
Is an addition.
Correct.
And that's not in red?
It should be.
Okay.
So I apologize for that.
No, I just am trying to follow along, and I'm having a hard time. Okay.
And we will slow down too, because it's a lot of changes.
Yeah.
Also, on that, page 24, the Course Description for, again, Guitar, was updated to reflect that students may take the course in Grade VII or Grade VIII. So you should see there, it says Grade VII or VIII. And then the changes on Career and Technical Education, again, we were removing that Introduction to Career Exploration and removed the Career Investigation course. What you see is a reflection of what will be offered to students in that area. Our High School Course Offerings and Descriptions begins on page 27. So we have removed all of the Concourse IX and Link V courses, related to all of the content areas in which they were related, to reflect, again, that conclusion of the Governor's HSPI program, or grant. These courses, which were specific to Jamestown High School and Lafayette High School respectively, were developed into Commonwealth Innovation Courses, available now to all WJCC high school students. And the development of these Commonwealth Innovation Courses went through an extensive process, including the work of a separate committee, and each course also went through that new course proposal process we spoke about earlier. As you can see, and up here, we have eight total Commonwealth Innovation Course offerings. Four were modified courses that were offered last year, and four are new courses. You can see the first four offerings here, along with which content areas are covered in that curriculum. The title of these courses makes it incredibly easy for you to see which areas that you would be receiving credit. And then here are the remaining four course offerings, again, along with which content areas you're covered in that curriculum.
Can you explain to me what discrete math is?
Yes, I can attempt to, and if I can't, then Dr. Miani can certainly do that as well. So discrete math is, it's a practical math course that's applicable really to government settings or in the political arena. So it talks a lot about logarithms, voting procedures, salary caps. So as you can see, it's kind of a perfect complement to law and society, as well as Virginia and US government. But it is a separate math credit. And it's a VDOE-approved course.
Never heard it called that before. That's an interesting title. Thank you.
And after we haven't defined it, I don't understand it.
Maybe you should have him come up and explain it a little bit better.
We sure can, absolutely. Dr. Miani, would you like to join us and talk about discrete math?
Do you have any specific questions about discrete math, or do you want, I can give you a textbook definition, what would you like?
Here we go.
Well, discrete math is a finite math course, so probability, combinatorics, when we just reallocated the School Division for the new school, the algorithm or computer program they use, used discrete math to figure out where people live and how to reportion them to go to the new school. That's an example of how students could use it. It's good with voting, like how they set up voting districts and polling and checking those things in the government discipline, which is why we coupled it in with those courses.
Does it cover things like statistics and...
Yes, ma'am, yeah. So statistics is part of it, because basic probability is in there, combinations of anything that you can think of, but those are all basic statistics or probability course content area material. So it's a good segue to that course or out of that course. Typically, it would come, the way we have it in the Commonwealth Innovation Courses, is that it's going to be after our probability course, so students will already have a foundation in that course. So when they go in there, they'll build on that foundation.
Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you.
That's why he's a professional, so I understand that.
Thank you, Dr. Miani. Moving on to some additional high school course updates, starting on page 27, in the area of English. We have removed the prerequisite for English IX. This is a required course for both the standard and the advanced study diploma, so there is no prerequisite for that course. We have removed the prerequisite for Honors English IX to provide flexibility and student access to honors level coursework, so you'll see that there's no prerequisite there. The previous prerequisite was advanced proficiency on the eighth-grade reading and writing SOL. On page 28, we removed the prerequisite from Honors English X as well, again, to provide that flexibility and student access to honors level coursework. On page 29, oh, yes, ma'am.
You removed the, on English X, you removed the prerequisite of English IX?
No. So for Honors English IX and X, the prerequisites were removed for both of those.
Okay, so the only prerequisite is English IX?
Correct.
Got it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Sorry.
On page 29, Advanced American Studies was renamed to reflect the Commonwealth Innovation Course, Virginia and US History, and English XI. So we wanted to remain consistency in our naming conventions and titles for those innovation courses that we're offering. On page 30, we added the VDOE-approved English XII Capstone Course to expand 12th-grade English options and provide a course focused on critical reading, college and workplace writing, and career-ready communications. Also on page 30, we included College Composition I and II to accurately reflect the Grade XII English course taken by most students participating in the Early College Program with Thomas Nelson Community College. And we also revised the Mass Media Yearbook Production prerequisite to communicate the rigor involved in the development of a permanent document. Moving on to Math, which begins on page 33. We revised the suggested math course sequence to reflect the prerequisite expectations set by the VDOE, to also include Math XII Capstone, and to ensure that all of our math pathways now lead opportunities for students to access Commonwealth Innovation Courses and AP coursework. On page 34, we removed Semester-Based Algebra I due to a decline in student interest in accessing this course in the semester-based format. Students who wait to take Algebra I in ninth grade are taking that in the year-long format. It's providing them the additional time to build that strong foundation in algebra and receive two credits. So they receive one math credit and one elective credit.
Yes, ma'am, I should about that. Going back to my notes, on page 19, with Math, I know in the past, the division's kind of goal was for all eighth, as many eighth graders as possible to take Algebra I, but in looking at what's on page 19, it looked like it was, we now have the three levels of pre-algebra, so...
I'll pull that up right here for us.
So, but there's still, there'll still be an option for eighth-grade students to take Algebra I?
Absolutely. So really, the main change of the math pathway here was between Grade VI and Grade VII. So whereas before, students took their Grade VI course in the Grade VI SOL, they then went to Foundations of Algebra III and took the Math VIII SOL. So what we've done this year is, they can go to, in Grade VII, either that pre-algebra VII and take the Math VII SOL, or go into VIII and take the VIII. So they have an opportunity to slow down or speed up, just depending on where they are at. Absolutely.
So, actually, so with the decision to not have a semester-long Algebra I in high school, does that suggest that fewer than fifteen students per year over the years were interested in that? Is that, I'm trying to understand what that suggests.
So you can see here...
Oh, I'm sorry.
Nope, that's okay, it wasn't up there. This is our total enrollment currently. So this year, we had zero students who enrolled in the Algebra I semester-based course, and it's been steadily declining over the past three years. So as more of our students are taking Algebra I in eighth grade, those that choose to wait to ninth grade prefer the year-long format.
Is that few, zero enrolled because it wasn't offered, or zero enrolled?
Zero enrollments.
So they, zero requests?
I can go back and double-check, but we had less than fifteen requests, so zero sections ran of Algebra I.
Just for clarification, it was my understanding that that wasn't offered this year. This, the current year that we're in, that semester-based Algebra I was not an option for students. So that's why it's a zero, I'm thinking.
I can go back and definitely check that and clarify.
I know that at Lafayette, that was not an option.
For the semester-based Algebra I.
There were students that wanted it, they didn't, they didn't apply for it because they were told it was not an option this year, the year that we're in.
Mm-hmm.
Just, I would like to have a better understanding, if we're removing a course, how few people are requesting it.
Requesting that course.
Because enrolling means there weren't, means the division made a choice. I'm interested in the student.
Student requests.
Their interest.
And again, if students are interested and they're told it's not going to be offered, then...
They don't enroll.
You don't even have that statistic.
You don't have that statistic, you don't.
We'd have it for the year before and the year before.
Well, we've got them there. You have it. So those are the students who actually took the class.
That's the took, but that's not the...
But again, that's, those are the student, so we did run it in 2017, 2018, and in 2016, 2017, and those are the students who requested and took the course.
Requested and enrolled are not the same number, correct?
Correct.
So that's...
For a number of reasons, for scheduling conflicts, for all sorts of reasons.
Right. But I'm interested in the request.
Not who enrolled.
Yeah.
I can certainly look to get that information to you. But again, I do want to stress that it's absolutely been our experience, since most of our students now are taking Algebra I in the eighth grade, those that do wait to take it into the ninth grade prefer to have that year-long experience, so they get the two credits and they get a stronger foundation. But I'm happy to get that information. Okay, on page 35, continuing with Math, we updated the prerequisite for AFTA, or Algebra Functions and Data Analysis. So that requisite changed from Giannarci to Al... So that requisite changed from Geonure treat to Algebra I to reflect updates to the suggested math course sequence. On page 36, we added the VDOE-approved Grade XII Mathematics Capstone Course to expand again the Grade XII math options and provide a course targeting outcomes defined in Virginia's College and Career-Ready Mathematics Performance Expectations. And then, what is no longer under the math section, you'll see we moved Computer Science and Advanced Computer Science from under Mathematics to Career and Technical Education to reflect current VDOE sked codes. And Social Studies, beginning on page 43. Similar to how this course was in English, the Advanced American Studies again was renamed to reflect the Commonwealth Innovation Course of Virginia and US History and English XI. And that description was updated again to consistently identify that it is an innovation course taught in the collaborative setting through project-based and blended learning methods.
So this is replacing what students have typically called in the past A push?
No, not at all. Nope. It's Advanced American Studies. Yeah, so Advanced American Studies falls under English and Social Studies. No, A push is still absolutely there. In very much high demand. On page 44, we added Advanced Placement European History to expand AP course offerings and entry points for AP. And then, all the way to page 62 for Career and Technical Education, or CTE. We added Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow I and Virginia Teachers Tomorrow for Tomorrow II to increase those opportunities for enrollment, CTE Concentration Sequence Completion, and Support Virginia Statewide Initiative for Recruiting Interested High School Students Into the Profession of Teaching.
I thought they were added last year.
Nope, Tomorrow, it was the Introduction to Virginia. Last year, it was Introduction to Virginia Teachers. So we're keeping that and then adding on I and II. On page 67, we updated that prerequisite for Engineering Design and Development to include Algebra II. And then we've removed some former prerequisites for that class, Principles of Engineering, Digital Electronics, and Computer-Integrated Manufacturing. Used to all be prerequisites for that class. So we wanted to really expand opportunities and course access to reflect current curriculum standards of that course. On page 68, we re-titled Computer Science section heading to read Computer and Information Science to reflect updated VDOE terminology. Also on page 68, we combined Computer Science with Computer Science Essentials. And on page 68, we updated the title and the description of AP Computer Science Applications to read Advanced Placement Computer Science A to really just reflect the update in College Board terminology and curriculum.
So that still has the Project Lead the Way acronym?
Yes. So Project Lead the Way, Advanced Placement Computer Science A is aligned with College Board's Advanced Science Computer, Advanced Placement Computer Science A course. So students that take that course then take the College Board AP exam that follows.
Teachers that teach that class have a Project Lead the Way credential?
Correct, a training.
And that's in all three high schools?
Yeah, it's being offered at all three high schools. Yes, ma'am.
So adding to Ms. Hummel for the, I'm sorry, Dr. Beers, go ahead.
I have a question. You mentioned fine arts. I have a question about some of the classes in there. Students who are very gifted in art in middle school, are they permitted to sign up for high school art classes that are not available at the middle school?
Are they permitted to take high school art classes? So our beginning art class in high school is Art Foundations, which is offered in ninth grade. So we don't currently have any coursework, any high school. So high school art classes are credit-bearing, high school credit-bearing coursework. And the only high school credit-bearing coursework offered at the middle school is our math courses and then our world languages.
The reason I ask that is, I know, for example, in Enrico County, middle school students who are quite gifted on or more of the visual arts, either painting, drawing, sculpting, you know, whatever it might be, they are allowed because they are so advanced and way beyond some of the art activity that's going on in the middle school. They're permitted to sign up for some of those more art courses.
And do they take that at the high school campus?
I'm just curious. I think, and not that math isn't part of the arts, but arts are the arts. And there's a very creative part of it. Not that mathematics isn't creative, but I think there's more to the arts than simply.
Absolutely.
I'd like to see more of that at the middle.
At the middle school level. So we do offer a variety of different art options, especially in visual arts for middle school students, but we can definitely look into that further. I know there'd be some scheduling implications and things like that, since our schedules aren't the same.
All I could say is, I have seen artwork on walls in all the high schools. They're phenomenal. And I know a number of those kids ready to deal with that stuff when they were back in the, have the opportunity.
I will say that in eighth grade, we do offer an Advanced VIII option. Students don't sign up for that or request it, but students work with their art teacher and those students are selected and that course runs in a smaller group. So our more gifted students, who would be the students you're talking about in the area of art, end up actually being pulled and take Advanced VIII, Advanced Art VIII. So again, it's not something that appears in the Program of Studies because it's not something that students, or any student, can just request to take in eighth grade. But absolutely, yes, absolutely. Students identify by interest and their collaboration relationship with their art teacher. Yep. So those students typically take Advanced Art VIII.
But that was new last year to the POS.
No.
It wasn't?
Nope, that course is run per week sometimes.
But it was in the POS, so is it not in the POS now?
It hasn't been in the POS for a few years, many years.
I asked about it last year from the DIAS.
Did you? Okay.
I did, because I asked if it was high school credit-bearing.
It is not high school credit-bearing.
Right, I understand that. But it was in the POS because I read it.
Advanced Art VIII.
It was in the POS last year.
I'll double-check for you. I don't believe that's, I believe, it's my understanding that course was not in the Program of Studies last year and hasn't been for a few years, but I'll definitely go back and check for you.
Because I understand students can't select it, but it was there last year, so people, anyways, I read it.
Yeah, let me go back and look for you.
So people might know that it's, to be aware of it.
Sure, absolutely.
Maybe they could approach their teacher about it. I know there, folks probably have lots of questions, but I think you're not, you're almost done.
I am almost done. Yeah. Just to jump forward to the course request timeline, want to give some updates about dates regarding the student course selection and registration timeline. This month, we jumped right into classroom and individual planning sessions with all of our rising sixth through 12th grade students. In February, we are holding our Middle School Course Planning Night and Curriculum Fair, as well as our High School Course Planning Night and Curriculum Fairs. In February, our school counselors are also facilitating transition planning by visiting all of their feeder schools. And our course request window opens online for rising sixth through 12th grade students and parents from February 18th to March 4th. So that concludes our formal presentation of the Program of Studies for 2019, 2020. Happy to address any questions. Ms. Hummel?
Would it be possible, this is probably more to Ms. Serzah, is it possible for us to get a copy of this, a hard copy of this, with the red lines?
Absolutely.
It just helps me to read it and digest it. It's really hard for me to do that strictly online. Thank you.
Additional comments, feedback?
And I'm sorry, can I just, I know kids that are in the arts. It's not that they go, get overlooked, but it's not, it's not a typical mathematics, English, history, world language thing. And if there are opportunities to get some of those kids to tap into the talent that they have at an earlier age and then provide opportunities for them to run with it as far and as long as they can.
Absolutely.
But I also think, having it spelled out a little bit more, I mean, you could have, I mean, we have a sequence, and they have a sequence, we're very clear about our mathematics sequence. We're very clear about our English. Well, there may be a sequence in visual arts I'm not familiar with, but I just think it's too important. And I have a granddaughter who's very much benefited from that. And I know that we have in our, we have in our high schools, students going from one high school to another high school so they can take a course that's not offered at the other high school. So that opportunity should be made of.
So we definitely do offer our AP and Advanced Placement Art classes as well. So studio art and 2D and 3D drawing and all of those courses in all of our high schools. Ms. Cock?
Just a couple of observations. One has to do with the career investigation change this year. Over the years, I've seen more stuff added to the, you know, health curriculum, whether it's CPR, and those teachers are expected now to have every child leave their class eating well, exercising all the time, not getting any diseases, knowing how to save lives, and now knowing how to investigate a career. And so I just wanted, would just keep putting more there. And we've got a halftime person sort of managing that. So I just wanted to throw that out there as an observation that kind of seems to be the place where everything gets, a lot of really important stuff gets dumped because it's not, as Dr. Beers says, it's not the math, the social studies. And so it's kind of the catch-all, so.
But can I, for Health and PE, for this specific course, for career investigation, these actual standards, tasks, and competencies of Health and PE VI are very similar to the exact same standards, tasks, and competencies of the middle school career investigation. So we actually were able to work with our middle school Health and PE teachers and curriculum leads and school counselors. And we've already aligned the curriculum throughout the whole year so that they see how it already falls into what they're doing.
That's good to know. But it's still a lot that they have to do. And then, also, one thing that, as we add new courses, I think that's really wonderful, and I'm very proud of the work that you all did to bring that here. And I know, I can only imagine how much work that was and how much thought went into it. But as we add more, and then the fact that we let students pick what they want, and so courses are made or not made based on what students choose. So they vote with their feet, as I've heard you all say many times before. But, and I see, we can see what makes. But what I don't have a strong sense of is what doesn't make. And I don't know what doesn't make because, you know, two kids were interested in it, or what doesn't make because 14 were. And whether if you add it across the division, whether it could have actually been a class. If you, and so I just don't, and I, do you keep those statistics? Do you monitor those trends?
So we are looking at that, we are looking at that every year. And a lot of times, if a course isn't making, and keep in mind, that whole master scheduling process isn't done kind of in silos. They're actually all together, all three high schools together in a room. And so if a course isn't making at one school, at least initially, we talk about that and have those conversations. How many kids did you have? How many do we have? Can yours come to us and we can offer the course here? So those are definitely conversations that we're having, especially with kind of our higher-level courses that tend to have smaller numbers of student interest. So yes, those are absolutely conversations that we continue to have. But I can look into, the best way to track the course request information from year to year.
Yeah, the difference between course requests.
Absolutely.
And I'm just, do you look at that? You know, I don't know if that's part of.
We do. We absolutely do, yes.
I'm trying to figure that, I'm just like relating it to my own kid's experience and me sitting in an office with a counselor with my kids. And I don't see where the request could ever be, like, like, we'll check on that or we'll see, or no, that's not offered, or no, that, that's, the act of requesting versus having it actually be recorded somewhere? I'm trying to.
So we pull a number of course request reports, absolutely. There are a number of course request reports during the master scheduling process that we're pulling and constantly looking at from all three high schools and adjusting and shifting and looking from year to year. Yes, absolutely. So once they put it in, it doesn't, it doesn't stop there. Then we pull those reports from synergy, and that's what we're utilizing to make those decisions.
Okay, but maybe it's the, it's the things that don't ever make the request. Right, because I think there's a dialogue, like, I know, I know for a fact at Lafayette this year, the dialogue was, Algebra I is not an option, so you cannot request it. That was the dialogue. And so how often is that a dialogue so students don't make the request? If they're sitting in their counselor's room and the counselor says, "That's not an option," then the student doesn't request it. So that's not captured anywhere. I think that's what I'm getting at. It's not captured. I don't know how you, I don't know how you. But it needs to be. I think that would be information that would inform our thinking.
Okay. And that's for every course that's offered in the Program of Studies? Is that what we're looking for, information on course requests for the courses in the Program of Studies?
Oh, no, that's, that's, that sounds really.
Are there specific courses that we're more interested in than others?
No, I'm not, I'm not at that granular level. I'm just think, I'm curious, do you track it? And then do you use that information over time to make decisions? Like, whoa, we've noticed, I don't know, I don't, I don't want, I don't want to get so specific because you're the expert, but do you notice that that course almost made it three years in a row? So maybe you say, you promote, "We're going to offer this course every three years" to, so that the students know that, and so that they, things that are almost making but don't. Does that make sense?
It does, it absolutely makes sense. And I think the larger answer to that is yes, we're absolutely looking at that each year and looking to see if we've noticed the same courses had 12 students sign up for the past three years. And what, we need to have a conversation about that, what that looks like. We talk to teachers about recruiting students for that class and what that piece looks like. And a part of that is kind of the reason why we brought on that curriculum fair as well, so students can get more information about all of the courses they might be interested in. So we'll look at doing a few different things. If the course is offered in the Program of Studies, then the message from counselors to students should be that the course is offered and that it's a course that they can request. So that's something that I can definitely address.
And I think it also goes back to the, this is, you know, I had three kids going through Lafayette, so it was multiple sitting down with counselors. And, you know, even the beginning of the year, my child would come back with, "Okay, I've got one class." And I have nothing, and so then we'd go into the counselor and say, "Well, give me something. What can we have?" But he had requested all of, he'd requested the semester before, all of, all of it. And then we only get like one thing. Do you know what I'm talking about? And I, okay.
You're not the only one.
So I guess, is that statistic, you're able to collect that statistic when the parents, when the kids at the very start are saying, "I want these," and then you come back and you've got one of the.
One class.
Four classes.
So to account for how many students that happens to?
Or just like, is that, is that data that you can collect and report on?
Yes, so absolutely. So again, we have reports that show course complex, which is how counselors know what students that's occurred to and how they know to pull them in to give them the coursework. So our master schedule is created through synergy. And so because it's an algorithm in a program itself, students either do or do not get courses based on the other courses they requested. So when those courses are done and their schedules are created, there are going to be holes that counselors then need to rework with students to fill.
So it's, it's, it's sometimes a conflict versus, so it's only offered once.
Correct, yes. So depending on how the master schedule is built, will depend on whether or not the student, so the master schedule's built first based on student course requests. And then students are loaded into that, their requests are loaded in into the schedule, and that's how their schedules are created. So you're always going to have students that have conflicts that you then need to go back and address.
Right. And then that's where I think there sometimes is an equity issue between the high schools and just the sheer numbers at Jamestown versus, let's say Lafayette or War Hill in requesting, and what makes versus what the numbers are.
Yeah, I guess I just would love, like, to understand if everybody's picking eight classes. How many get eight? How many get seven? How many get six? Before they have to go through conflict resolution, I don't know what you call it. But is it everybody? Is it some?
We can pull those numbers. Yeah, we can pull those numbers through synergy. And look, we can pull conflict reports from each school and look and see how many students have conflicts.
Or just a percentage, yeah.
Okay.
What's the trend?
So again, I think it, again, it's, when you get into the master scheduling process and the complex, it's a. it, it's a very detailed, comprehensive process. So the more restraint you put on, the more conflicts you're going to have. The more, you know, teachers you put and this teacher can only teach here and this teacher, the more student conflicts you're going to have. So it, it, there's a, a variety of reasons for why that occurs, um, so the.
The other thing, you know, to be honest, everybody can't get everything at, at the time that everybody wants.
Correct, yep.
That, it, you know, trying to do a schedule in college, you know, geez, I had to, you know, somebody had to wait four, three semesters before they could get into that class because that's just the reality of it. And so, you know, and parents do have to appreciate that. They have to understand that. Sometimes you don't get it, you know, you don't get that course. And I would imagine that is not going to be true with all the really major basic courses that everybody has to have. It's going to be some of these other ones.
Absolutely. So our goal is for students to get the courses they request. I mean, I think that that's always going to be the goal is that students are getting the courses that they request. Um, a lot of times where we have more issue is when students request a course, they get it on their schedule and then they decide or drop out that they no longer want that course. That's where we have more issue with kind of the scheduling and the complex and trying to get into a different course, but that course might be full. So we tend to have more conflict at that piece than we do earlier on.
It's just like it in college.
But Dr. Beer's, to your point, that's exactly at that macro level. I would like to understand so that when people reach out, I can say, you know what? This is very common. It happens in 75% of the cases or, you know, so that I, I would like to understand.
No, I think scheduling is one of the most, you know, complicated.
We can absolutely, Dr. Han, I know we can provide kind of an overview of, of kind of the master scheduling process and some of the things that might happen and some numbers or things related to that.
Very macro.
Yeah, absolutely.
But then it also, to your point, not everybody gets what they want. But even to that level, is it equitable? Is it, um, pretty much at the same percentage of kids that don't get what they want versus certain high schools, they have more students that don't get that they want? Or, or I just, or it's an economy of scale or whatever. But I think whenever you, yes, everyone doesn't get what they want. But i- is it?
Balance?
Is it balance?
Yeah.
No, and you want, you want to look for trends. I mean, that, that's, that's to your point. That's, that's somewhat, that's a really important thing.
Absolutely.
So that means look over the, you know, the last three or four semesters and see how often that came up.
Absolutely.
That's what you.
Yep, we can work to get that to you.
And I guess to that point, just making sure that in a student's, in, in their four-year career, that, that ideally that class that they want, that maybe they don't get it their freshman year or their sophomore year. But in, so if they've asked for it multiple times, like that's the kind of data I would like to know. That eventually in a four-year period of time, they could get that class.
Mm-hmm.
Even if they can't have it in their school, they would, could go to another school and have that class.
And take that course.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, just knowing that kind of information. Um, I know I have a couple of specific questions, but I wanted to see if other folks, Mrs. Young?
I, I was interested, you're, you're talking about on synergy about the reports.
Mm-hmm.
So for example, if a student goes in and there is, isn't something in the, um, the program of studies that, that, um, that they're interested in, but they say, is this ever offered? Does, does somebody note that in a report that there is possibly somebody that is out there that has something else in mind? So that, I mean, we're, we're looking at innovation and sometimes it's the things that we don't think about that students do think about that I think we're.
A great example of that would be our AP European History course in which we added this year. So a lot of times those ideas come, the ideas to add new courses come from students, student inquiries and teacher inquiries. And so that's why we have now that new course proposal process. So in having those conversations, if students are interested to that course, then we can propose that that be a course be added to the program of studies.
So there is, so there is a, um, a course proposal process?
There's a new course proposal process, yes ma'am. That's how all of our new courses go through and come, the end result is that they're in the program of studies if they're accepted by the committee.
Okay, and then how do we get that information out to families and to our, to our students that that's a possibility?
So typically that comes from our school community, meaning internal. So students or teachers that understand the impact that those new courses are going to have with staffing and spacing and technology and education and things like that. Um, but, you know, we welcome any suggestions for folks that want courses that aren't being offered, absolutely.
Okay. I think that's a great process to have.
Are there any additional, any additional questions? Well, I've got a few.
I did have one. On page, um, let's, let me get my, 63, the Child Development and Parenting for Class Grades 10 through 12. Is, um, is that, can you just tell me a little bit more about that class? Page 63.
63, okay.
Go to it. Yep, so that class is the class we've run every year that was typically just parenting. And then it was really just a title change because the VDOE changed that title as well. So a lot of students in that class are learning, um, just about healthy mother and child and wellness, um, things like that. It is a CTE course. They're looking at support systems, overall wellness of children.
Is that offered at all three high schools right now or just Lafayette?
I can find out where that's running.
Is that the course that occasionally or has the potential for, for the students to do?
To go to the Lafayette, yes ma'am.
So I'd be interested to know if the only school that that's offered is Lafayette.
Hmm, I can certainly look. Yep, it's offered to all, but we'll see where it runs.
So if it's offered at the other schools, would those students have an opportunity to come to Lafayette's Child Care Center? That observation.
For that coursework?
Yeah.
Yes, if they're enrolled in that course. If it's a shared course that they're off, also in.
Mm-hmm.
It would fall along with any of the other shared courses in which they're taking.
Um, I have a couple of specific questions. So on page 15, when we talk about early college, I know currently students who are participating in the early college program have to complete the advanced diploma requirements. And so based on reading this, it doesn't look like that's the case?
Correct, so students and, uh, accessing the standard diploma or advanced diploma requirements can access early college program.
That's exciting. Um, and I do like the format and I think that, um, it is easier to read and just wanted to give.
Oh, good.
Accidents to that.
Oh, good.
Particularly, I think the sequencing for the social studies and the science, um, and then looking at changing some of the prerequisites definitely opens it up to, to, to more students to access AP and, and higher level classes. So that's exciting to me. Um, I know on page 16, where we talk about virtual learning, I know in the past, um, students who aren't able to access some of those higher level AP classes have an option to do it online. But I know that in the past, there was a scheduling problem with, they didn't know that the class wouldn't make. And so then by the time they found out that it didn't make, it was too late to get, to do the virtual class. So is there, is there a way that we've figured out how to mitigate that? So, so that students register for the.
Correct.
Virtual class and the building class simultaneously?
So some of that issue lies with the enrollment and registration period through Virtual Virginia, which is not anything that we can control, but can provide feedback for. Um, and the deadlines in which that occurs. And so often the cutoff for registration for Virtual Virginia happens before our students come back and receive their schedule. It's just the nature of that. However, when that occurs, we still try to get them access to that course. Whether that's through an approved multi-division online provider, we can access it that way, um, which is still also another online provider outside of Virtual Virginia that the VDOE has said this course has been approved to count and transfer the credit over or through our own virtual learning program at WJCC, depending on the course.
Is it possible to make it a practice for, for some of those classes that we know we have a hard time making in the buildings to just automatically sign them up for virtual? Just automatically do that?
We, we, we try to do that as much as possible. So you'll see, we actually have students who are registered for Virtual Virginia before they leave in April for that very reason. So if we're looking at a trend and we, counselors know this course hasn't run in a couple of years, the student wants to take it, we'll go ahead and register for them. And then once they get back, we can either withdraw them or make that decision.
Okay. Um, and then, um, on page 22, I was, with regard to language. I know last year with changes in the, in the, um, program of studies and middle school language, we actually closed the door for, for band and, and choral students. So they, if they, if they chose foreign language, then they could not take band or chorus. And then that closed the door because if you don't take sixth grade band or chorus, you cannot ever take it again for the rest of your career. So did we address that?
We did, that has been completely addressed, um, this year. So by making our exploratory wheel no longer a requirement, that opened student options from one to two. So now they can choose exploratory wheel or they can choose a chorus and, you know, a band, a chorus or band.
Can they do, they can do the wheel and?
Yes.
And band, so they don't have to choose band or chorus.
Nope, not at all.
Um, that's great.
Mm-hmm.
That's ex. Um, and then on, I think just on page 71, I think it's missing a number, page 71. I don't think the actual number is there on page 71.
Thank you.
Yeah. But overall, I, I think, thank you for all the hard work. I, it was great to read it. Of all the, of all the POSs I read, this was.
It's there, 71, right there.
Yeah, maybe I just missed it.
Right there.
Oh, it's in a different, I expected it to be someplace else. There, please.
Great, thank you.
Are there any additional questions, feedback?
I also really appreciate all the hard work that you and the committee did. It's, I know it's just her, Herculean and.
Yes, but we want to get it right and we want it to be helpful and useful tool for families.
A lot of work.
Thank you so much for all of your feedback.
Okay. So moving on to, um, item eight, board information discussion items. We have the annual review of our standing operating procedures and I'm going to toss that to, um, Ms. Hummel.
Oh, okay, so.
Wait, no, wait, no, sorry, hello, wrong one. Which, you get 8.2.
8.2, where, let me get back into our.
No, this is 8.1. We're gonna, um, it's, it's time to review the SOP.
Oh, okay.
And so I think that will go to policy committee, but, uh, wanted discussion. Um, I think it makes sense to go to the policy committee, have them review it. But if, if folks have particular items of interest or feedback, I would give that to Ms. Cook and Ms. Hummel. Unless folks want to discuss that now, I would just say. So it's, last several years it's gone through policy and, um, so Ms. Hummel and I will reach out to the board and. Get feedback. Work with Ms. Serza to do that. Item 8.2, I'm going to toss that to Ms. Hummel. That's the school board evaluation discussion.
Okay, so, um, I believe that Ms. Serza printed out the school board, um, self-reflection report and, um, I wanted to say we had everyone, uh, but Ms., Mrs. Young, but she was very ill. So other than that, we have, um, all, the six of the seven of us. Yeah, she was, she was very sick. So anyway, we are glad that you're feeling better now. Um, I don't know if anyone has any comments about the report. It was for me, just observations. Um, it's, it's very nice that in, of the 10 items under self-reflection, we strongly agreed or agreed on all but two of those questions. And the only two that we seem to have a little division on is the, we have a strong communication structure to inform and engage both internal and external stakeholders in setting and achieving district goals. And then the other one was our board takes part in team development and training to build shared knowledge, values and commitments for our improvement efforts. So I didn't know whether, just wanted to open it up in case anyone wanted to elaborate on, on anything, but in particular those two areas.
What it does show is that there's a lot of alignment amongst the board. And so it's not, it wasn't 2-2-2-2, you know, it was, there was a lot of, a lot of strong agreement.
A degree of consensus, I think.
I think so too. And I think under, under the communication structure, I think, um, we're seeing great strides in that area. Uh, and so if someone was to reflect back on the entire last year, then I can see where there might be, um, you know, some discussion about communication. But I, I'm seeing only positive steps forward personally. And then under 10, um, the team development and training, I think my opinion on that is that we made a hard budget decision a couple of years ago to, to kind of divvy up and not have all of us go to National School Board Association Conference just to save money for the school system. But I think, um, some of our training took a hit on that. It's just my personal, once again, my personal opinion.
Any additional feedback? Okay, moving on to action items. Um, action item 9.1, personnel actions. So we need to have.
I move, we approve personnel actions as presented.
Second.
Second.
There's a second, is there any discussion?
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beer's?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Okay. Approved, um, action item, uh, 9.2, approval of minutes from the December 11th meeting? I move we approve minutes from the, uh, from the December 11th, 2018 meeting.
Second.
Is there any discussion? Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beer's?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. Uh, this passes. Um, action item 9.3, Resolution R-1-19, appreciation of WJCC principles, like a motion?
Adam Chair, I move that we make a, um, designate a resolution, R-1-19, appreciation for our WJCC principles.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? They are, they are awesome. Much deserved.
Once a day, every day, once a day.
Dr. Beer's?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye. The motion passes. Um, item 9.4, award a contract for invitation for bid 19-13709 roof restoration at Lafayette High School?
Adam Chair, I move to, we award a contract for invitation for bid 19-13709 roof restoration at Lafayette High School to TST Roofing in the amount of $2,598,760 and zero cents.
Second.
Second.
Any discussion?
Yeah.
For Kelly?
Mr. Snipes come up?
Mr. Snipes. Lot of money.
So, um, it is a lot of money. So TST Roofing, we done work with them before?
No, we have not.
Uh, but we have confidence in their, and did I read somewhere that this was, um, this was revision A to the bid?
Yes, this was revision A, um, purchasing re, uh, the bid out a second time to ensure that the wording in regards to the add alternate and the total base bid were correct.
Okay, so we, we had it out for bid once and then we had to redo that?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Good, thank you.
Any further questions, Ms. Young?
I just have a question. When you look at the amount of money that was bid by the number one bidder and the number, number three, we don't ever, we're not ever concerned at what the difference was?
Uh, when, your, your question, I'm sorry, I was over there.
I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Snipes.
It's okay.
No, I'm, I mean, I'm just looking at the difference in the bids that came in on this and it seems like such a huge difference in the amount of money that one bid, uh, TST Roofing thought they could do for than the, the other person. I'm kind of concerned about that discrepancy.
Um, traditionally, you know, bids are based off of, you know, the company thinks they can do it all based on their labor, based on their contacts, based on their relationships with their vendors. So, um, we don't usually question it. Um, if we, if it's significant, um, purchasing, JCC will contact the, the vendor to determine why or, you know, what kind of references they have. And we've done that in this case.
Okay, thank you.
So just to, aside for that, um, to Mrs. Young's point, so for me, roof engineering and TST roofing were like $4,000 apart versus the one that was the outlier. So I, I get more concerned when the low bid is an order of magnitude over everybody else versus the high bid. Um, I was just wondering if with, uh, the, since there are only $4,000, if we've done work with roof, do we do that, do that one first?
It's a little more than $4,000 apart for the total, for the total base bid? base bid?
Oh, I'm sorry, you're right. It's like thirty-four thousand or twenty-four, twenty-four thousand. But, but anyway, I'm good, thank you.
Are there any additional comments, questions? Okay. Serza.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point five, Revised Policy IIAC Library Materials Selection and Adoption. Is there a motion?
Still roofing, sorry.
Adam Chair, I move approval of, to revise policy, I move to revise policy IIAC Library Materials Selection and Adoption.
Is there a second? Any discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point six, Revise Policy II B E B Bring Your Own Device Program. Is there a motion?
I move that we revise policy II B E B dash or comma Bring Your Own Device BYOD Program as presented.
Is there a second? Any discussion?
Gosh, I'd like for these to be on a consent agenda.
Ah, no. I asked. Told no by our clerk.
Your policy.
Hearing no discussion?
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point seven, Revised Policy IKB Homework.
I move that we revise policy IKB Homework as presented.
Second.
Any discussion? Serza.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point eight, Revised Policy KB Public Information Program.
Adam Chair, I move to, we revise policy KB Public Information Program as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point nine, Revised Policy KBC News Media Relations.
Adam Chair, I move that we revise policy KBC News Media Relations as presented.
Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. Item nine point ten, Revised Policy KF Distribution of Information Materials.
I move that we revise policy KF Distribution of Information Materials as presented. Second.
Discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Motion passes. And lastly, item nine point one-one, Revised and Recode Policy IHBG Home Instruction to Policy LBD Home Instruction.
Adam Chair, I move to revise and recode policy IHBG Home Instruction to policy LBD Home Instruction.
Second. Discussion? Hearing none.
Ms. Hummel.
Aye.
Mr. Kelly.
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor.
Aye.
Mrs. Young.
Aye.
Dr. Beers.
Aye.
Ms. Cook.
Aye.
Ms. Ombi.
Aye. Okay. Item number ten, ten point one, Board Member Comments, starting with Ms. Taylor.
Sure. There's a lot of information tonight to absorb, and I hope that everyone will join us for our public hearing on the twenty-second at the Stryker Center so we can hear their opinion about budget. And also, I want to thank Ms. Cook for her service for the past two years as chair, and best wishes to Ms. Ombi stepping into that position. I appreciate you guys, and I'm looking forward to this year being on CAC and Student Advisory.
Thank you, Mrs. Taylor. Mr. Kelly.
Man, Mrs. Taylor stole all my thunder. I'd like to, I would like to thank Mrs. Ombi, Mrs. Hummel for standing, standing up and serving as chair and vice chair, and I appreciate their willingness to take the position. And I would also like to thank Mrs. Cook for her service these past two years as chair. She did a wonderful job in this capacity, and I believe represented this board and WJCC school system very well. And I'd just like to publicly thank you for your service and appreciate your good work this past two years.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Young?
Yes, you're going to hear the same thing again. Yes, I just want to, first of all, thank Mrs. and Mrs. Cook for her service and for the great job she did. I think you set the bar pretty high. We're going, we've learned a lot, and I think that we'll continue to do so. So, thank you and wish you the best, and you've got our support, and we'll help you the best that we can. I think your job is cut out for you. It's pretty hard. But you've got, you've got Ms. Hummel there that she, she can carry on. So, but, and I guess I'd like to wish the staff and of our WJCC Happy New Year and best wishes for all the good things. And I had a student the other day as I was coming out of my house, and I asked how their first day went back, and they told me they were tired. So, I can only imagine how tired our teachers were after that break, after that break. So, anyway, Happy New Year and keep up the good work.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Dr. Beers.
First of all, I'd like to thank all the staff that came before us tonight. Very complex, very, lots of, lots of decisions that had to be made in terms of the budget, but really clearly presented, and I found it extremely helpful. I know I'm kind of a stickler about curriculum and program studies, but that was an outstanding presentation as well. I had to chuckle, I saw the, I saw the title of the course, Creative Writing, and I'm thinking, well, where's the creative painting course? But that's okay, that's just my, sort of my thing about the arts, yeah.
Now, there's a process to request it.
Well, the other thing is, yeah. I also wanted to really appreciate and really thank Mrs. Ford, Mrs. Cook, and John McLennan, and
Mar Ramsey.
Yeah, yeah. We're giving a fabulous tour of Matthew Whaley School, and there's an incredible atmosphere over there. She's a wonderful principal, and for me, it was, a lot of it was walking down memory lane. But I'm so happy to see that school still standing and doing such great things. Well, you don't know, see, you guys are old enough. There was, there was a time when a not-too-friendly neighbor in Williamsburg wanted that, that school torn down in a parking lot put up. But there were several women, one of them happened to be my wife, and Mrs. Spearman, who was a guidance counselor for years out of Lafayette, got together a group and halted that and ended up having Matthew Whaley renovate it. He got air conditioning, and it's a, it's just a wonderful, wonderful piece of architecture and a great school. So, I, I really appreciated the opportunity to go back there. That's all.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
I just wanted to thank the presenters tonight. I know I really appreciated the budget discussion that we had and all the work, of course, that went into the Program of Studies. And I'm looking forward to actually getting to delve into that for some Good Night Reading coming up to actually look at all the red lines and everything. I wanted to really, really thank Mrs. Cook for the last two years. I, just being kind of parliamentarian this year, you see how much work the chair of the school board does and all of the time commitment and all of the emails going back and forth to citizens and staff. And so, I just, I wanted to thank you for your service. And I also want to extend my congratulations to Mrs. Ombi for taking on that extra workload. And then, finally, really thank Jim Kelly because he's going to be the most excellent parliamentarian ever and keep us all on task, so.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel.
Good luck. Ms. Cook. I'd like to also congratulate everyone who took a leadership position today, especially you, Ms. Ombi. It's been really a pleasure working with you as vice chair for the last year, and I look forward to following your lead this year, and will do anything I can to support you. I wanted to also speak a little bit about the format today. I really like the, the around the table. I like doing that in here and putting it before a meeting. I think that's very good. The only thing I regret is that I would have preferred to vote for you from a dais and, you know, on TV. So, that's, that's a downside to that. I don't know whether we do a short organizational meeting next year just to get that, you know, pomp and circumstance taken care of. But, but I do want to thank everyone for their support over the last two years. It has been an honor to serve with all of you and together in the last two years, we have hired a marvelous superintendent, and we adopted a new strategic plan goals, which are really coming to life. And we opened a new middle school. And so, I just want to thank you all and congratulate you all for your good work because we make a good team, and so, thank you. I also wanted to add that in addition to the visit to Matthew Whaley, Ms. Young and I went to Norwich Elementary, and Ms. Matthews took us around with Mr. Eisenhower. So, that was, that was nice to see that, the incredible artwork. That place was just teeming with energy a few days before the holiday break. And then, also, I'm looking forward to next week visiting our General Assembly delegation in Richmond. We have appointments so far with a couple, but hopefully, all four members of our General Assembly delegation. And we'll hear from people in Richmond what's going on, a little bit more about what we heard from the budget, and see what, by then, maybe we'll know a little bit more about what the General Assembly's doing, so.
Thank you. Thank you. I can't say thank you enough. Ms. Cook, for all that you've done for the last two years and learning from you. And so, I have big shoes to fill. So, I appreciate everyone's support and hope that I am able to lead and do just half as well as what Ms. Cook has done. And so, I'm looking forward to working with everyone, and I think we're at a good place in our division, and we have the right people in leadership positions in the division. And like folks have said tonight, the presentations tonight were phenomenal. And Mr. Jared, it's like you have always been a part of us. So, that was a really incredible budget presentation. I, too, am looking forward to going to VSB Capital Conference next week, and I'm excited about the Program of Studies and all of the changes in the formatting with that and doing what we can to ensure that, that all students have access. And certainly, we're looking at through the equity lens that students have access to AP classes across the division. And just wanted to give a shout out and accolades to our band students across the division and their parents who got up early past, this past Saturday morning to go to district band auditions. And so, students are now getting those results, and congratulations to the students who were accepted to district band. With that, moving on to upcoming events. Item eleven point one. So, on January ninth, we have the Twenty-First Century and Career Ready Committee, three thirty in room one oh eight in Central Office.